Duly note their civil comments and discussions, all for the purpose of creating a stronger and healthier community. We thank all our national representatives who work diligently to form a financially and stronger and healthier union in our country at this time. Please be with them as they make decisions for all of us. Please keep and protect all our men and women in uniform. We defend our freedoms and all our first responders who provide for our safety, health, and well-being every day. Bring them home safely to their families as only you can do, dear God. In these times, may we remember that humility is nothing but the disappearance of self in the vision that God is all. And it is written in your word in 2 Corinthians, chapter nine, verse six. Whoever sows sparingly will also reap sparingly, and whoever sows generously will also reap generously. For all this, we pray in your holy name. Amen. Call this meeting to order at 6:02 PM with the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All can be seated. Madam Alton, do we have a quorum for the meeting tonight, the City Commission meeting?
Yes, sir.
On this 11th, 2025. Thank you. And first order of business, I understand that Commissioner Green is under the weather, so consider a motion to excuse her absence this evening.
So moved.
A motion from Vice Mayor Bailey.
Second.
Second, from Commissioner Penny.
Yep.
Any discussion? Any comments from the citizenry? Hearing none, all is in favor excusing Commissioner Green from the meeting this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Motion carries, four zero. Any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
None from staff.
Any from anyone else in the dais? Hearing none. Consider a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Vice Mayor, second from Commissioner White. Any discussion or questions from the dais?
I am so sorry.
Any comments from the constituents in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm so sorry, I missed it again. Are you passing the consent agenda?
Haven't.
No, ma'am, we're adopting the agenda as it's stated. Thank you, Ms. Costello. Any other comments from the constituency in the audience? Hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries, four zero. Consent agenda, entertain a motion, accept the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Motion from Vice Mayor Bailey, have a second.
Second, I wasn't at the budget meeting, but I will second.
You told me regarding the minutes as reflected. Okay.
Have you had a chance to look?
I did, but I don't know if you're wrong or right.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you for that trust. I guess that'll be a vote of trust. Okay. Any other comments? I have just clarification questions that I'll just send to you, Deanna. They're just more just from my knowledge than anything contesting or whatever. Any comments from the constituency in the audience regarding the consent agenda? Hello, Ms. Fiori. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Karen Fiori. I do have some questions on the bill payments.
Okay.
And again, I'm going to state, it would be nice if some of my questions get answered. I'm now over two and a half months waiting on previous questions to be answered around bill payments and by emails and by standing up here asking, and I still have not received them. Okay, so I see that we purchased flowers for Triangle Park from Lowe's for $160. I love flowers. We have no money. I have no idea why we're buying flowers. That doesn't seem appropriate to be buying flowers, as much as I love them. We removed a tree. Not only did we remove it, but then we took another step and we did a stump grinding for $400 and something dollars, I believe, for the stump grinding. We don't have the money to be doing stump grindings. My husband has to cut every tree that falls on my road. The city does not come and clear it. The one time they came and cleared, it was a hurricane that it completely covered the road, was the only time the city ever removed a tree off of my road. My husband, as little as maybe two and a half weeks ago, three weeks, had to cut down a tree that was laying over the road. Yet we're paying money for stump grinding, and I can't even get limbs or anything removed off of my road. It's, I just don't understand it. Aflac, there's a payment here for $794.40. We were told by staff that this is going to be transitioned over to the employees to pay on their own. That was done, said in June, but now it's July and I'm still seeing payments come out. It could be a timing issue, and I'll talk about that more in a little while, but I don't understand why we're still paying for that. Petty cash for 500. It would be helpful if maybe instead of you just blankly adopting this to request, you know, so where are the receipts that justify the $500 for it to be gone? And you have two replacement of checks. That's fine, I understand that, you have to replace checks, but how come we're not seeing that being voided on your transaction list? I don't understand that part. And then you have your Samuel Clark. You have June and August retirement. What happened to July? Was that overlooked, or is that on a different month? And is there any way that we can get that automatically, you know, automatic payment to the gentleman, I assume it's a man, instead of doing it? Because I've noticed that many months, you know, we have to catch up. Here's two months. I think one time it was three months worth. Wait, I have one more thing, sorry. I also noticed, again, that the Blue Cross Blue Shield, it's only coming out of your water fund, which I think is odd. I think it should, at the very least, go every other month for that bill, seeing that you're not able to do your transfers between funds in QuickBooks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I can answer two of those.
All right.
Some would answer the two of them. The flowers, that wasn't all flowers. I paid for the flowers. There shouldn't be a donation for $50, I believe. I paid for the flowers with this little part here for the JCC and for the Triangle Park. The rest of it is for public works, something there. Sam Clark, I tried to remind him every month, I missed you. That was my fault. Well, I usually remind him, but they did try to have that put in automatically, except I was not taking.
He requests a check. He doesn't want ACH or automatic.
I know.
I mean so.
No, they tried to put it in, just like Alice, where it would automatically.
Right, but Sam, Sam doesn't want that.
But, no, they would be reminded that he's a championship.
Oh, okay.
And for some reason, they can't do it. So that's the two I know about.
Okay.
And July was paid, so it was always.
Commissioner White, can you turn on your thing, please?
I'll be right.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
I know that's hard, I know, to remember to do that for sure.
Before you start, Ms. Costello.
Sure.
I know you don't have to, but Deanna, for just the sake of a courtesy, do you, can you answer the aflac or the Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Aflac, um...
What month, what month that was? Was that a past month?
I don't know, whatever. Seven, seventeen. So, yeah, we, it hasn't been transitioned yet. That is a correct statement.
Do we anticipate do that in the month of August?
We talked about that this morning, yes.
Okay.
That is our goal, to get it over. Um, heavy cash, there's receipts for what we've already spent, and this is the replenishment.
Can you produce those receipts?
When we can, sure.
Yeah, okay. Just for our review. Thank you.
There were checks voided and replacement. We're probably gonna, actually, we are gonna transfer, transition back to ACHs. We're having way too many of our checks be going missing. Emerald Data told us, or actually told me, it's a huge fraud, it's getting worse and worse, and they do not recommend we do checks unless that's our only option.
Okay.
So just letting you know, we're gonna do our best to transition back to the dual approval through ACH process.
Okay.
Um, but as far as voiding them, I'll have to get with Dallas.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's see, Florida Blue, yes, we have many bills. I know Karen had other that are coming out of whatever fund we can. Our funds are getting quite low, so we do the best we can. So I'll get back with Dallas, because me and him might have had a miscommunication on if you could transfer or pay from what fund, but that's what we do, just so we can keep things going, is do our best to keep everything moving.
And not deplete the balance to be able to be prepared from the general fund for anything that comes out.
Correct. The wire fund seems to be more revenues going into the, right at the moment, it is, yes.
Which is unusual, because usually it's everywhere around.
Yeah, no, it's the general fund that's quite low.
All right, thank you for that.
Sure.
The stump grinding.
And Ms. Fiori, just for duly noted record, we hear what you're saying about the road and trees. If you have any other trees, please call it in, as, so that work order can be done.
But they don't, they don't do the work orders.
I'm speaking to Mrs. Fiori regarding her comment about stump grinding and the need for her road to have attention to her husband's not having to manage that road. So please let us know, Ms. Fiori. All right, Ms. Costello, you have something regarding the bills?
I'm sorry, Deanna, can I explain the stump grinding?
The tree didn't.
Well, yeah, I was inferring that. The stump grinding, just the size is why we did it.
From what I understand, I happen to be, I think, off that day, which it's fine. I support staff's decision because, um, I don't know how to put this. We took it down because it was life safety issue, so instead of leaving that there, we wanted it completely clear, so there's no weeds, no, nothing going forward. It's just clear to the ground.
And it was a sizable tree?
Yes, it was.
I mean, it was one of the old Laurel Oaks, huge.
Yes.
And the haul off fee for that usually is as much or more than the stump grinding fee or whatever.
So that's how there's two separate bills on here.
Okay. Did our staff take the tree away, or did the company take the tree away?
I think it was on the report that they hauled off the stump, the grinding of the stump, that they took it off.
Took it off.
The tree company took the whole tree, yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Costello, regarding bills.
Okay, Lori Costello, citizen. I, I also asked about the aflac, because it said paid by the city, and I know that I've been, I've asked about that before, never got an answer. Also, I had been asking about, does the city pay dental, vision, and life? I emailed several times, but never got an answer on that. I had a question on 7-1 Downtown Outdoor Lights for $84.
Is that from Clay Electric?
I...
That provides some...
No, I didn't think, I don't have the bills in front of me, because it is, it says Clay Electric.
Clay Electric Co-op, some of our electricity, the lighting.
Okay, well, whoever puts these memos in, they put them in different every single time, so you don't know what they are. You know what I mean?
Bless you.
It's, nothing's consistent. I've, I've asked and asked and asked every time.
Duly noted, Ms. Costello. What other questions do you have about the bills, please?
Um, so on 7-2, we got the deck, belt, and blade for $597, and then we got replaced blades, pulley, and belt, and those are about the same things, but you're paying over twice the amount for the ones. So I'd like those two receipts to find out, wow, what the difference is, because that's a big, big difference of cost. Contract and insurance charges, I don't know what that is for $294.
What date are you talking about with that one?
Okay, that one is 7-13.
Okay.
For $294. And then we got recreation sponsorship banners for $724. Public Works Camera, 16...
What is your question about the banners? They're purchased by outsiders, go into a line item, and then they are paid by the city for the cost of the banner.
Okay, so they're purchased...
The sponsor of a banner pays more than the cost of the banner by the city or archer.
Yeah, I understand that part.
The sponsor does not pay direct to the provider of the banner. So that is a cost to this city for the banners. The capture of the money for the purchase of a sponsor paying for a banner is another line item. It's not going to show here as a bill. It's going to be a revenue source.
I don't understand that, but...
Ms. Costello, our church bought a banner for $350. That banner is under the cost of $350 as a purchase for that banner that's now on the fence.
To the city, right?
What?
You're talking about it costs less for the city and then they turn around...
To purchase the banner.
Okay.
To have it made. It's part of a sponsorship to sponsor our recreation program by businesses and churches and individuals paying for sponsorship of a banner in the, in the cost of $350. The banner does not cost $350. The city still has to pay for the banners to be made.
Okay, okay, now I understand. Okay. Public Works Camera, 1608, I thought we already paid for that.
The damaged, destroyed camera that had to be replaced, I understand, correct? I'm sorry.
No, this is the Public Works Camera. We just got billed from Emerald Data.
Cam, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, so this is the old...
The Public Works Camera.
That we never, we didn't pay for it yet?
Right.
Until now.
Okay, um, okay, after-hours modem repair for $629? Why do we need a modem repaired after hours?
Give me the answer.
If you can, if not, and that's sake of time.
We had no internet at all in Justin, and we were both in the middle trying to do something critical, so Emerald Data could come out the same day, so we had them come, and it happened to be they were here past five, so we had to pay the after-hours amount.
Thanks. Ms. Costello, your time is up.
Okay, well, there was a correction on the bills.
Mr. Mayor.
You can send that to Ms. Alton, she can review it. Yes, ma'am.
A couple of those I can answer. The JD mower is a commercial mower. The recreation mower is gone. It's a lot smaller. It's a, yeah, it's just a mower. That's the difference in the prices of those. Recreation sponsorships, I wanted you to be aware, after you had vouchers, he went down on the price of banners, so we could offer them at a cheaper price. We still make good money off of them.
Because mine was so difficult for them to be made.
Yeah, but that was...
Thank you.
So, I think that was all I had that I could answer.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner White. Yes, ma'am.
Roberto Lopez.
Welcome, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
Congratulations to your son Wendell and his appointment at Tuskegee.
Thank you.
I hope he likes the area.
We're very, very proud. Oh, yeah, signed today. He got there, it was his first day, and he's looking good.
Very proud for you and...
He was with the president of Tuskegee University.
Wonderful.
Anyway, I'm going back to bills, and I don't agree with the petty cash anymore, because I remember Dallas saying that we didn't need to have petty cash. I also heard from Karen, she said the same thing. It, we just don't need that item, and if we do, we need to know what, what, what we're going to be using it for, and it's kind of hard to track that, I'm sure. The other thing, I just heard a gentleman two days ago to cut down three trees, and he's charging $1,650, okay? And he's going to do a little bit of trimming on the side as an extra for us, as an organization. I think I asked this commission sometime ago to look at all the contracts here, you know, the tree companies, the, everything, because I'm looking at $2,229 to take down one tree. And that doesn't include that $400 and whatever it is dollars for the, the, the trumps grinding of that one tree. Trust me, as many tree companies as I've dealt with, and I've offered my help in many, many ways about that and sent you information, we should not be paying that kind of money for one tree. Because I saw the tree, and one of the limbs had already fallen off. I think somebody went out and picked it up, so that's too much.
Do you have any other questions about the bills?
No, but I, but I would, yes, I would like to see you guys search around and look for some contractors. I've offered this to you. I could give you a whole list of people.
Yes, ma'am.
They wouldn't have charged that amount of money, nobody that I know, for one tree.
Okay, please provide that reference to Ms. Alton.
I've already done it. I don't know what, much more I can do.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else? Welcome, Mr. Arnold.
Hello, Gene Arnold. I hate to pile on, I really do, but I do want to reinforce when, when the bookkeeping and some of this stuff isn't provided to us, and it's not in a very transparent or a clear manner, it hurts the message. It, it makes everything look bad. You lose trust, quite honestly. Yes, sir. I don't want to lose trust, okay? Because I know all y'all believe in my heart are good people, but the first thing, and this is like deja vu, when I look at this, this is in portrait view, it should be in landscape view. Landscape view allows more information. I can look at the second sheet here, and I see utility service company, Park Elevated Water Two, dot, dot, dot. Don't know, but it was $3,263. Got to have more information. Two-fold water, monthly water service, A, dot, 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 $2,640. Again, need more information. That would clear things up, and we don't have these questions. When I go back over here to echo some of the things that Ms. Fiori said, Lowe's Flowers for CH and Triangle Park, can't have that. It's a bad perception. And I don't think that there's any reporters here today, but you know what they do? They watch online, and they report, and they, they write a story, and they kind of recap. And there's some good in that, but there's also some bad, where, always consider, there's a reporter sitting here. JD mower, again, $500. I come down, BAS Mobile mower, $215. Cash for register. Perception-wise, that's just a bad look, I'm just being honest. After-hours IT modem repair for $629. Emerald Data Partners, they're just fleecing us, from what I can tell. On a, on a monthly basis, couple thousand dollars each month, that residual money, and what they do, along with Cannon Financial Services, it's just, there, there's not even enough here to really get into, because maybe not every month, but every two months, three months, we should have a profit and loss and a balance sheet that gives us the financial information to evaluate the health of the city. We just need it. And it should be right there in QuickBooks, and it's a couple buttons that you push, or it's in Edmonds, and at some point, we got to get caught up, and we got to say, we're either out of the QuickBooks business, or we're out of the Edmonds business. Just got to, and we got to be consistent, and then we have to have reports, so that we're not spending 30 minutes on this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Bill Lewandowski.
Good evening, Mr. Lewandowski.
So I would be remiss if I don't do my monthly statement, which is, you really should have something that shows percent complete on budget. I mean, it really is not that hard to do. I don't see how you can sit there and you can approve bills if you don't know what your budget status is for each one of those items.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a reason why we haven't had that yet? I've been asking for that for like two years.
Our accountant specialist just returned from 10 days off, and Dallas is working diligently with him now to get us prepared for our Budget 3 workshop, correct? To have this information.
That and the auditors are going to be here tomorrow.
Auditors will be here from the 12th through the 21st.
And looking through all them documents, it's been a chore. I did credit it myself, yes, last week, so...
Time limit is not one of our assets right now.
Two years.
The diligence, we understand that. We fully understand this. Thank you. Did we approve?
No.
Okay. All right, we have a sec, a first, a motion, and a second, full discussion of the bill payments without pulling it out as a courtesy to those involved. I'll entertain the vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Nays like sign. Hearing none, motion carries, four zero. Next is our guest this evening, Archer Masonic Lodge Fall Festival. Do we have someone present to share with us about the Masonic Lodge event?
He assured me someone was going to be here, so I, I believe not, but it was supposed to be for fall of next year, of course. He wanted to, I'll just give you a little snippet of what he told me, I think his name was Jackson. He said that they are gonna, they pay for absolutely everything, but what they wanted to ask the city for was to kind of like close the roads like we used to do for Yule Days that the Historical Society did, and then...
Have they completed an application?
No, no, he knows they need to do all that.
Need to do that.
Yeah, we talked for quite a while, but he wanted to talk to you guys and see, and I told him if there wasn't money involved, I would think we would be open to something like that.
Okay.
But I think there was staff that would be needed during the day, so I told him you guys would have to approve, you know, those kind of things.
They need to complete the applications that come.
Of course, of course.
I mean, please.
He just wanted to come now to see if we were even interested. He just said he misses not having anything in Archer anymore.
We're always interested in events.
So I'll get back with him and...
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, he sent me a message also, and he wanted, I tried to help him, he said, do you think the city would be interested in partnering with us? We will do all cost. And I said, well, if it's not going to cost the city, I have no doubt we'll be interested. And then he went into closing roads, and he wanted to close from the Masonic Lodge down to here, to the Cannon. And I said, we can't close this road because there's a residence. Correct?
Which road?
The one right here in front of City Hall. Because Sean lives at his building right here, we couldn't close the road.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't shut it down such that folks couldn't get to their homes if they needed to.
That's what I thought we had discussed that once before. And he said, well, what about 170? And I said, that's a county road, you'd have to get with the county, I think.
Okay.
So he said, well, do you think the city would be interested in partnering with us? I said, I have no doubt. If it's not going to cost us, we'll be, you'd get support.
Okay. Well, he needs to complete the application first, so it can come before us, and certainly be present at the next meeting, if that's not too late for you. All right. Next is public comments.
Announcements.
Announcements.
I'm sorry, announcements?
Yes.
Anyone have any announcements?
Right.
Trying to move this meeting wrong, sorry. Any public announcements?
I don't have an announcement yet.
Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Brenda Melissa Pisco, First Archer United Methodist. Did I do something? Oh, okay.
I said welcome.
So, we are really excited. We know that many years ago, there was an ecumenical Thanksgiving prayer service, worship service that was held. So about two weeks ago, I sent out over 12 letters to fellow clergy in the community. First Archer UMC would like to host that again, to try to get us connected again, and as faith community to give thanks. So November 25th is what we have set, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So if you are a part of a faith community that would like to be a part of that, then I would ask you to connect with me, so we can work together in putting something together that would celebrate the many different faith communities and giving thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else with announcements? Taco Day.
Brenda Skinner, good evening. I just want to bring forward again, I know I mentioned it before, this coming Friday this coming Friday evening, we are having a free community dinner, with taco dinner and tacos and an ice cream social, from five-thirty to seven, at First Archer United Methodist Church. A lot of people are going tacos? Yep, that's what we're doing. It's going to be a taco bar, served to everybody, come down and enjoy. And then, I have the ladies of the ice cream bar. Wouldn't know who those were, and I, I understand they are like the people to do it, are going to be handling our ice cream for us. So come down, have a good time, and then if you'd like to stay at seven, because we have our KJ Cowboy Mike, is going to be there to do karaoke from seven to ten. So come on down, have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
So I wanted to mention, we have our Paint and Praise on the twenty-second. Just about full, there's a couple of seats left. And we also have our, we are having an art festival at Archer, October eleventh, ten to, yes?
Paint and Praise, what date?
Oh, August twenty-second.
And then, what was the second thing?
October eleventh, from ten to two, we're having an art festival. It's going to have art, food, games, kids' crafts, and gourd decoration, decorating, all sorts of fun crafts.
Where would that be?
That'll be at Archer as well, yep.
Archer United Methodist?
Yes, yep. And it'll, like I said, it'll be ten to two, and the vendor tables will be available. It's twenty-five dollars per vendor.
Okay.
If you have any crafts that you want to set up for sale.
Okay.
And you can get with me or Melissa and Brenda.
Okay, thank you.
For that, as well.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lewandowski.
Yeah. November eighth, American Hometown Veterans Assist, which is a local veterans assist group here in town. We provide financial support to veterans in need within a hundred miles of Archer. So we're going to be having our annual bike rally, bikers on parade. I'm not sure of the route yet, it's still going through law enforcement, but one starting point's going to be at the Amvets over here in Bronson. The other one's going to be at Tallahassee, at the Harley dealership, and we're going to be meeting in Live Oak. We've rented the, the fairgrounds there. So we're expecting between the two sites, at least three hundred motorcycles for that and sponsors. I'll be reaching out to your firm for support on that, as a sponsorship.
Yeah.
So, but it's, it's a worthy cause, and what we try to do is help these veterans in between getting help from the VA and other sources, especially nowadays when things are cut back.
The marathon ends at the Bronson Amvet, or it starts?
It's going to start, it's going to be.
End in Tallahassee?
So it's going, no, it's going to start at the Bronson Amvets.
Yep.
And, and simultaneously, it will start at the Harley Dealers, Harley, Harley Davis and Dealership in Tallahassee.
Tallahassee.
And it will meet about twelve o'clock or so at the Live Oak, I'm sorry, it is the Swanee County Convention, Swanee County, not Convention Center, the fair, their county fairgrounds, yeah. Right outside of Live Oak.
Live Oak, okay.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Roberta. I sent an email out to everyone, I think everyone, I'm not sure. But it was on August third, and I had some specific questions. And I just want you to know that I did plant those plants down at the Community Center. I've been watering them from water from my own home with jugs and jars. And I asked our interim manager if someone could go down and help me water them. And if you notice on your paperwork that I gave you, it says, she answered by saying, "We do not have the resources to take, take care of this task, or take this task on." The holes have to come from the side of the building and run through. I'm not able to do that. I have kept them alive, and I'm asking this commission to appoint Scott or somebody else who may be not so involved right now, to go down and water the plants, at least twice a week, when it's not raining. Do you know we've had rain all this week, so nobody have to go down there and do a thing? And that has helped me a lot, to try to keep them well. The other thing, our manager said, was when I asked her about my public records. I say, "I have also asked the public for public records for months, and I do not have those." Her answer was in red, "Yes, you are correct." So I want to know when you're going to get them.
As soon as I possibly can, Roberta. I mean, I'm to the point where I don't even know what to do first anymore. There's so much stuff to do, but I'll get them to you as soon as I can.
I asked for these, some of them, as far back as February. There was no those reports to be done, nothing. And they're simple, like getting, uh, uh, applications from in that office, from October first to, no, March to June, or something like that. I mean, come on. I mean, it's simple stuff that I'm asking for, and I can't get it. So I put something in your packages for y'all to look like, look at, because I actually had to sue the city to get my public records. And I want you to read that very carefully. And, 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 and that's just not right. So I want to know what you're going to do about watering the plants when it's not raining, because I'm not going to do it.
I couldn't look at them.
So, yeah, you the manager.
I, I already answered you, so they will need to override my answer.
It's duly noted, Ms. Lopez, wrap it up, please, you have one minute.
It's duly noted, so you, you don't know if you're going to do it or not.
I'll go down and water them for you, Miss Lopez.
Fine, I'll give you the hose, I'll show you.
We don't, we don't need a hose. We have the hose.
I appreciate that very much, and I want to say that Kathy did a wonderful job on the Health Fair. It was great. Also, the Divas yesterday, they really did a dynamite job. They were so good, and it was so great seeing them dance. But anyway, these kind of answers, as far as I'm concerned, Deanna, to give me like, you know, "Yes, you are correct," I think is very unappropriate and unprofessional.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez, your time is up. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Fiori.
Karen Fiori. I'm going to read from my sheet sheet here, just so I don't lose any of my time. But before I start, I thought we talked last meeting, that we were going to stop printing all those agendas, and I see there was a bunch out there. I'm just trying to save money, every little piece helps.
Do we have that scheduled for the next meeting?
I don't have the cost, what it would cost to put on the screen, so if you tell me to stop, I'm good. Just, it's not going to be on the screen.
Stop.
Is that a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay, please.
I will make a motion to stop printing.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? To stop the additional printing of those?
Or just do one, or?
At this time, before we have the alternative. Motion dies for lack of a second. For transparency, we will continue, but we can certainly reduce, so folks can share.
Okay.
If, if, at your, at your decision, at this point.
Could, could we interrupt her, or equate? Did you say you didn't do it because you were trying to see how much it's going to cost?
Correct, that's what they, you guys had asked, was to get the cost from Emerald Data on that, versus making all the copies and the color printer.
We said we'd burn our own devices if we had to.
Most people have this.
Right.
And can do, I'm sorry, can do it on their phones, or their tablet, whatever.
Yeah, that's the.
But we'd waste a lot of paper. We do.
We.
And we were just waiting for the alternative, so it would be transparent for the citizen here and what it would cost, but we certainly.
So we can't just put a PDF up here, or PowerPoint, and just click through?
I, I'm not sure.
That seems, like Emerald doesn't need to be involved, but, I, I don't know, it's not my business, but.
My concern was, can everybody see it?
Yes, that's where we had a full discussion of that, so.
From not in the back of the book, if you had, I'm, I'm telling you, I just had cataract surgery, and if, before that cataract surgery, now had to see that screen, it would be very difficult for me.
And so we were asking.
So for some people, you may have great eyesight, and it may not bother you at all, but for some people, it may. And my concern is to make sure everybody can see. We might can print less, if it's too many out there for y'all, we can print less.
And that's the difference.
And I would love mine on paper, and I cannot print it from my job, but if y'all feel that we need to cut it, we can cut it, but you just got to consider, everybody don't have good eyesight.
So how many have you been putting out?
Four?
Five.
Five, just reduce it to two, and people can share.
Yeah, and then, and you can reduce, I'm like Kathy, you can reduce hours, you definitely could reduce mine, because you send it in the email, and I mean, and the only thing we probably would have to get would be like any changes.
Right.
And, and, yeah, I'm good with that.
I can bring my own laptop, so you can not have mine at all.
So you receive them by email, but then someone physically drops off the agenda packets, paper to each of you? So we could save gas, we can save additional printing there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we should probably stop that altogether, yeah.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm here all day. All right, can, should I start, or?
Yeah, we're starting you back up.
Okay. So Lori received a report from staff on seven-twenty-nine titled Payroll Summary, and the dates on top of that report said ten-one-twenty-four through seven-one-twenty-twenty-five. The report lists employees with total hours, their rate, and any deductions. My observation on this report was, most employee hour time rates, they totally did not equal what those totals on that report stated. The holiday hours did not match for not one employee on that report. So you have eleven paid holidays, from what I'm reading from your employee manual, plus one extra subject to the city manager's approval, so you do the math, it's a hundred and twenty hours. Most employees were already over that many hours, as of seven-one, according to this report. So then I started looking at the deductions from the supplemental insurance, and it seemed pretty low, because I keep seeing these transaction lists of Aflac, 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 and the numbers are pretty high. So what I did was, I decided to tally all of the supplemental payments according to this summary report, and I compared them to all of the transaction lists for each of those vendors, starting from ten-one-twenty-four through seven-fourteen was when I did this, based on the city's transaction list. What I found was that in total employee deductions from payroll summary, so that report that was provided to Lori, totaled eight thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. The total vendor payments for that same amount of period totaled eighteen thousand forty-five dollars and fifty cents. That's a difference of nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents. That doesn't make sense, if, if we're paying, if the employees are paying for their supplemental insurance, it should be penny to penny. It absolutely should be no reason why those are out of whack. So, I don't understand why that could even possibly be, because you're paying them, the bill, it should exactly equal the invoice. So if you count how many payments have been made to the vendor from ten-one to seven-fourteen, which is roughly through the tenth month of our fiscal year, right, ten months. Aflac had ten payments, according to your transaction. Colonial Life had nine payments, Humana had nine payments, Liberty National had nine payments. Global had three payments to the vendor, but I state on February, the vendor only started in February, with last payment made in May, and the May payment was rather large, perhaps was paying multiple amount, months. I want to see a sample of the payroll deductions and vendor invoices that reconcile. So no one should be approving this check, ever, without showing, here are all the employees, and all the deductions came out of this check, and look, it matches exactly to your invoice that you're paying to Aflac, they are apples to apples, I'm going to sign my name off of that. That's the only reason why you would ever sign that check, and I, if, I don't see how you have such a discrepancy if that's how it's being followed. And I don't want to see like a whole year's worth, but I would like to see a handful. Give me like a sample, give me two once ago, this last month. I, I want to see if the employees are paying a hundred percent for their supplemental insurance, or if the city has been paying for some of that supplemental insurance. And I have my report outlined, if anyone's interested in seeing it, but I would, again, making a public record request to see, I want to see supplemental insurance that's showing that they're paying a hundred percent.
Thank you, Ms. Fiori. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Costello.
Lori Costello. The Health Fair was wonderful, thank you, Commissioner Penny. That report that she's talking about, that I got, is a total mess. People are collecting already a hundred and sixty hours in holidays, and we still have two more holidays to go. I, I mean, anybody, I don't know who's doing our bookkeeping or something, but we need an accountant here. Dallas don't have time for his eyes to be everywhere. I can't say how bad that we need accountant, because the numbers are not jiving. Okay, I have been on Deanna, ever since she got to be manager, I've been on the other manager, about these, I've been from here to the commissioners, I have offered to take you around, to show you all the meteor lids that are off. Okay, well, they turned off the water at my rental house, they didn't put the lid on the hallway. It was crooked, okay? I forgot to tell my husband, he ran over the lid, and that part, that metal part, went up, tore up the blade, tore up the thing, the round thing, pulled the thing off, pulled all the wires. I told Deanna, now I'm here requesting for y'all to reimburse me for my lawn mower to get repaired. Something needs to be done, they see these water meters every time. Last week, they were right across from the Baptist church, digging it up. Would y'all like to see the picture, how they left it on my phone? It's a mess, and the lid is not on, so not only do they pick them up from old ones, they don't put them on when they work on them. It is a mess, so I would like to be reimbursed, so if you guys could do a vote on that, I'd appreciate it. And why can't our bookkeeper slash accountant do a profit and loss? I mean, he's paid to do those kind of things. Sam Clark, on the bills, it says, he was paid for June and August, but nowhere does it say he was paid for July. Is somebody putting these bills in wrong? What was he really paid for? That doesn't even make sense, when those were the July bills, but it just says, "We paid them two hundred dollars for June and August." Lot of mistakes in those bills, I'm telling you. It, it's crazy. The right-of-ways are being neglected like crazy. The guys are now, they cut down the mowing for two to three weeks. There's big limbs everywhere on the right-of-ways, the sidewalks, I asked for the sidewalks to be cleaned before school starts, well, that never happened, there's still glass on the sidewalk, there's overgrowth on the sidewalk. I mean, I don't know what's happening with Public Works, but I've been telling Deanna they need to be supervised. I sent every single one of you a Public Works report, an old one, to where they did four times the amount of what they're doing now, four times, with the same amount of people, four times. Don't you think there's something seriously wrong? And then Calvin says he don't even have time to answer my questions on the reports that he puts out.
Time is up, Ms. Costello. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Arnold.
All right, let's start with something positive. Very, very nicely done at the Health Fair on Saturday, I would be curious to hear just how many people attended, from citizens, but it looked like you had a bunch of vendors, and it was very nice. It's glad I stopped by.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to get into a little bit, this, this really feels like deja vu. I was not here on August twelfth, twenty nineteen, but three y'all were, and actually, four y'all were, because Kathy Penny and Cindy Thomas are in the audience, making comments. And I get to that because the, you had Wade Wheeler and Melanie Wells. The city attorney was Scott Walker, who's Fulton Walker, so, and then, of course, there were Charles Hammond. Now, as I go through these notes, this is fascinating stuff, by the way. On August eleventh, Commissioner Wells asked, "How do we know the FY twelve-twenty ad valorem rate when we do not have a budget to review?" Gosh, doesn't sound like they had a budget in August of twenty nineteen. The city manager, I'll get to that later. Item, or Agenda item number six, "City of Archer Proposed Four-Day Work Week." I think that's a terrible idea. I guess this is where that started, but that's just my opinion. Commissioner Wells is not recommending, City Hall is closed on Fridays. Commissioner Hope thanked the office staff for cleaning, it has saved the city four to five thousand dollars on the budget. Well done. Item number eight, "Approval for Kimble Horn Invoice for Phase One Collection System for Wastewater." Boy, that's where the nightmare started, right? approval for Kimble Horn invoice for Phase One collection system for wastewater. Well, that's where the nightmare started right there. Then we get into, it's, it's fascinating, item number nine, where y'all were scrutinizing bills from Allison McGrath, really going into it and checking, whereas if you remember, Kimble Horn was sending us a bill in May, in June, in July. They just kept sending bills. No one was approving them, but when it was all said and done, they wanted to get paid all that money. Hope that's going well for you. Commissioner White asked, when was the last comp plan updated? Commissioner Hope says he believes it was five years ago. Wasn't five years ago, it was like ten years ago.
Seven.
Well, Mr. Walker stated our comp plan was updated about ten years ago. I guess we'll circle back in the next meeting, minutes. Attorney report, the city attorney advised staff not to answer questions from the public. Wow, that's crazy. Scott Walker, don't answer any, any questions, y'all. Let's not be transparent. I'm glad he's not here anymore. All right. As we keep moving along, we see the infamous land swap of the Equogen, Maddox Kirkland CSX trans, I don't even know what happened there, but a lot of things going on. Again, there's comp plans. The last one was done in twenty fourteen. I don't know if there's been one revised since then. Has it been eleven years? Or there was? Okay. And I don't know. It's just fascinating when you have meeting minutes and what it tells you.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else? Yes, or Mr. Loren Dowski?
So on Friday, I happened to see a couple of dump trucks, big dump trucks, industrial type, go past Jody White's house. And it sort of brought to mind that I think it's time for, and of course, we also had that dump truck accident on July seventeenth up the road here. I think it's time for the city to start taking a hard look at its ordinances when it comes to these commercial industrial vehicles going through town. You know, they're destroying the roads. It's problematic. We're going to have more, so I think that's something that we need to take a hard look at. Along those lines, I think as part of our long-range planning, we should look at impact fees for some, for the industrial properties when it comes to these vehicles. There's a mechanism for that. The state statute has it. I'm sure that Dallas knows how to do that. So I, I think that's something you should take a hard look at. The other thing is have the, has Ronnie LLC submitted the permits for, to you yet?
For?
For construction of the concrete batch plant?
He, no, just the demo permits.
Okay, just demo permits and then the Swanee permits for the stormwater management.
I don't have those.
Right, right. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have those. Okay, thank you.
Planning, Kandler?
Mayor Hope. So we have a budget workshop on Thursday, August twenty-first at six P.M. at City Hall. And City Hall will be closed on Monday, September first for Labor Day holiday. City Commission meeting will be on Wednesday, September eighth, excuse me, September tenth, see, at six P.M. And that's for our fiscal year twenty-six, tent and millage and budget will be on the agenda. And then a special city commission meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-fourth at six, City Hall, and that's for our final fiscal year twenty-six millage and budget will be on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know when we, we started scheduling meetings on Wednesdays, Wednesday.
Yes, so.
I have a problem with any meeting on Wednesday night when there are still churches, there are still churches that have services on Wednesday night. We've got a pastor that has church on Wednesday night.
Yeah, and we had a discussion.
It was by exception.
Yeah, I have a problem with it, but okay. I mean, I don't go to church on Wednesday.
It was because of the conflict with, with not having Dallas present because of his primary position at Newberry. So we were trying to accommodate to ensure he was present.
He couldn't be here on a Tuesday or Thursday?
No, I think they were, I can't remember, something he had to do as in Newberry.
That Tuesday is the county.
County, so we couldn't have our meeting.
That's.
Okay, I just have a problem with Wednesday.
It was by exception, Commissioner White. It wasn't customary that we do that at all. That was the first thing that was brought up is Wednesday, is church. And the first one I looked at was Reverend Green.
But Commissioner Green did.
She could accommodate.
But it's not just, it's not just the pastors. There are people that go to church on that night.
I absolutely am.
They might be here, they might not. I'm just saying, it's a conflict.
Thank you. Old business, we have none? New business, Agenda One, Resolution Number twenty-two-five twenty-four, adopting revised rental application?
Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash twenty-four, a resolution of the City Commission of Archer, Florida, adopting revised rental application for usage of facilities owned by the City of Archer, directing the city manager to implement the use of such revised rental application. Mr. Mayor, this application was put together by city staff. Our office has reviewed it. I also have had some conversations with Ms. Roberta Lopez regarding the application, and she did make a suggestion, which I, I would appreciate if you all would entertain, the form of payment she, she recommended and made the suggestion that it appear on the rental application of how we're, we're taking in those fees, whether it be by check or credit card or money order or so on and so forth for tracking purposes. Ms. Lopez, of course, you're welcome to repeat the same thing. I just wanted to let them know that you and I had had that conversation about the form of payment on the rental application.
Thank you for disclosing that.
Sure. I, I just didn't want you to think I was usurping you.
Do I have a motion to consider?
I will make the motion to approve the new rental agreement.
Okay, do I have a second for discussion?
Updated.
I have a second.
Second from Commissioner Penny?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the dais regarding?
For purposes of clarification, is that with the change to add? Thank you.
Or to consider it because the mode of payments.
Right.
In the description thereof.
Right. The, the motion on the floor was to approve the rental application. I was just trying to discern if it was with, with that form of payment addition.
Anybody have questions? I have questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, what's your question?
No, no. You, you're first. You have any questions? No. Okay, number one, all pages need to be numbered in any application, any resolution, please. Because as they come forward to us, you know, we, just for clarification, page two, page four, This is page. I did not. I was just so irritated about that. I'm sorry, old age is hell. Three, four. Page five, general facility regulations. Number four, tables and chairs. Last line of that description between the word chairs and two, it, the word clean needs to be added to that. C.L.E.A.N.
No, say that again.
I'm sorry, page five. Okay, it's under tables and chairs. It's the last line in that section. It starts with chairs. I'd like to add the word clean. I mean, we may have disagreements with what's clean, what's not, but too many times we open those closet doors and those tables and chairs are not clean. And I'm talking about with food still on them. And the times I've volunteered, it, you know, it, for a city event or whatever, and I just know if I was renting it, you know, and the word clean needs to be in it, please. On that same page, under outdoor use and kitchen access, we don't have a kitchen. So.
It said kitchen gift available, so.
I think the word should say food preparation.
For B?
Outdoor use and food preparation, preparation area use.
So A.
Because we don't have a kitchen. I mean, I'm sorry. And then specific to that section, under section B, it says kitchens, if available, are for warming and storing food only, not for, the word hot needs to be, but the next word, food production.
Wouldn't that entire line get deleted?
No, because there's a microwave that they can use to microwave things.
I'm sorry, I thought you just said that there aren't, isn't a kitchen.
There's a kitchen in the community center. There's not kitchens at the parks.
Right. Okay, so we're, we are leaving the kitchen language then.
We certainly can, but it, there, there is not cooking, i.e., I don't think we have any ventilation in that kitchen area. People can bring in portable stoves at this point with this wording like this, with no ventilation that would set off then fire alarms. It hasn't happened, thank God, but it certainly can. So we need to be specific with this. And if someone's more literate than I am, what I'm saying is, but you cannot go in there with a Japanese cooking grill and start cooking away and there's no ventilation in there. There's no ventilation for the microwave, except the microwave itself. So I just want to be specific with that B in that last line. Not, not for hot food production. People bring in hot.
If you don't have a microwave, you don't have hot food production.
Requiring ventilation. How about that? Add it to that line. Because the microwave does have its own self-ventilating, but you can't go in there with portable electric grills and start grilling away and not have ventilation. You're gonna, you're gonna have an issue. You can bring hot food in and storage and then try to keep it warm. Believe me, I, I know that from the events.
Okay.
And number seven, under parking, this B, the section, so it's like parking on grass or unmarked areas is strictly prevented, comma, unless overflow parking arrangements are requested and previously planned in writing with the application. We have had events large enough that we had to offer overflow on the grass fenced area to the east. So we just need to address it there so that they're not saying, well, I didn't, I could have used extra parking or whatever, you know, and this, this should be added to that if possible, please.
So.
I'm sorry.
Before you move on.
Yes, ma'am.
At number six, that says outdoor use and kitchen access. So if outdoor cooking, grilling is planned, the renter must notify the city in advance.
That's outside. So we've got natural air ventilation. So that's not, that's Mother Nature's kitchen. So it's not, I don't think it's been a problem with the grilling outs, outdoors, bringing the hot food in.
That's, that's my point. So if, why does renters, renters have to say that they are going to grill if they are paying for the park? Paying, you know, they are renting the park and they're grilling, what's, and it's outside.
You're talking about for the, they're just notified about, about the grilling? I think from, just a safety issue. I mean, I, I would think if they're grilling, I mean, they're.
They cannot rent and, and be at the park, and there are grills at the park and they can grill. And still not say anything, exactly. But under?
I'll be with the million on the side. Is there a couple on the side?
There used to be. I don't know if they're still there.
Yeah. So.
I don't have a problem with A. It was just addressing the kitchen definition.
So I, I, I feel like this actually needs to be out because they could just go up the outdoor, outdoor cooking and grilling, having to notify the city because you could just go up there now, take you some coals and, and, and put them in the grills that are there. And, and you're not renting.
And we have a lot of people that do take their kids up there and have hot dogs. Yeah, they use it.
Okay, I, I agree. I mean, as long as there's not a safety issue, water source to be able to put the fire out if it gets out of control and three-barrel grills are out of control grilling away. I'm not talking about our little grills. I'm talking about if it was an outside source grill. Okay. Remove A is what you're requesting, what you're suggesting or on that?
The first part.
The first part of the sentence. Oh, yeah, it's all, it's all of A.
All of A, okay.
Six, go back a page.
It's, it's page five. We're still, yeah. So remove A.
Remove A, revise B.
Yep. That's all on that.
Okay.
On seven, on parking.
Overflow.
Parking on grass or unmarked areas. Parking on grass or unmarked areas is strictly prohibited. You can't really do that at parks because they are, that's where everybody parks for games, for, if there's an event down at Maddox, they're going to park, Wilson Robinson, they're going to park on those inside fields.
And I'm sorry, I was specifically thinking of the Archer Community Center. And if we need to be specific to Archer Community Center, please add unless, unless at ACC overflow parking arrangements are requested and previously planned in writing application. Because we have had events where counted spaces, there weren't enough with the number of people they're going to have, times two cars, there's not seventy-five spaces. So we've accommodated with the overflow grass belt, but it has to be notified so that we can unlock those gates. It's up to them how they park them. I mean, it's. Okay. I think that was all a consideration. Okay, and then this, this is the, next to the last page. I just lost my count on pages, but this is on the, next to the last page. It talks about facility rental cleanup checklist. Is that still issued to the renters? Or is it just posted down there for them to find? This is, this is, that's the last page on that, next to the last page. It's middle of the page. Total rental fee, and then it says facility rental cleanup checklist. Does that mean it's checked off that it was issued to them? Is that why that's there? And it's there twice?
Yeah.
Is it supposed to be before and after? It used to be that way.
I believe so. Tangi worked on the, actually, she did all of it for me.
Okay. And I'm not picking a tangent. Oh, I'm just saying, it, from my recollection, there was a checklist that was part of the application. Before, here you go. Got any questions from Tangi or, you know, Tangi offer any questions, and then they must complete that at the end of the event to ensure.
Oh, I'm going to ask Tangi.
And if it, it could be the one form and it just have a column of before and after.
Okay, yes.
So that, that, that's our out if we find things are not done, but. So if that could just be checked on before we contingent approve this or whatever, before and after. And then right below that, it goes into cleaning task, cleaning task, cleaning task, and there's no definition. I think that refers to the checklist, but I, I'm, I'm just losing track of what am I doing here if I'm renting this with, and this is presented to me. So if we could get clarification on what that means.
It looks like it was probably in an Excel or some kind of spreadsheet, and I think it was for like these things.
I mean, it might be a numbered list, and so maybe just the numbers need to be put in there. And that, you know, they fully understand these things must be done. That's what I'm assuming, but if we could just check with Tangi and have her double check or.
Yeah, I think it's a formatting thing like Vice Mayor said, I believe.
Okay. But we just clarify what, what that is referring to. The line below that, that cleaning task repetition, it says remove all trash and place in dumpster. The next line, it says wipe off slash down kitchen counters with a damp cloth. That should be a period, and then the next statement should be turn off. It, that should be removed. Turn off stove and oven if used. There, there is none. I think this.
Maybe they were talking about the, the senior cities.
The mi, I mean, if we want to be specific, the microwave. But it, it stays on until you hit the buttons to have it start heating up. So I just think that whole statement needs to be removed. There is no stove or oven.
Turn off the stove and oven.
Yeah. And then the next line is okay. There is no freezer. So, and freezer needs to be. So, and freezer needs to be removed, because somebody could catch us on that and say, you didn't have a freezer, and it states it. The next line says tidy restrooms, wipe counters with a damp cloth, and remove, after that should be all trash. And I hate to be anal and OCD, but if you just say trash, I remove some trash. And left five bags piled up and trash, you know, and the ladies, and the men's bathroom, whatever, so. Um, it, it protects us so that if we need to recover some of the deposit, it gives you that autonomy to do that with that line, so the word all can be in there. And then, on the last page. Again, the top line, cleaning tasks, and it's a checkbox, but i, if it's specific to a number, if we could just identify and define what that is. And the next line, it says replace all chairs and tables. The word clean needs to be added after tables. Replace all chairs and tables clean to their reserved room. Rooms, period, and then assent, the next sentence, it should be a drop down, the next sentence should be, I'm sure, and I read the cleaning instructions thoroughly. This is where it's emphasizing, that cleaning instruction list checklist somewhere that was there. That's all I have.
Now, within my motion to, to approve it with the changes.
Okay.
All right, go ahead and-
You amend your second to that effect? Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Penny. Questions, comments regarding changes and the resolution put before us?
I have a copy of, um, I'm gonna give this, share with, this with Deanna, and it's from way back. It says the Archer Community Center consists of seventeen hundred square feet open area. And this is another thing, we need to put the seating capacity in there at two hundred and sixteen. That came from Mr. Bream Architect. And it says, uh, sound system, kitchen and ca, kitchen for catering convention of oven, that's a convention oven in there. Uh, the other thing, um, what was I looking at?
It's a convection oven.
A convection, what did I say, convention?
Convention.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, you're thinking conventions.
But anyway, I think this is important to have, because it shows the capacity.
By consensus, by consensus, we can amend it to add that document, is that okay? You could add that to it as well.
No, she doesn't need to add that, she can add the seventeen hundred square feet to show how big it is, somebody, sometimes they used to say, well, how big is it?
We used to have the seating arrangements also, I think.
Yeah, 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 you had to help them with the senior, and that, that slip that you were talking about, um, with all the check marks, that should be given, put it in that package so it can be given, she can tell them this is what you need to do.
Yes, ma'am, that was the contingency.
Uh, let's see here, uh, do not leave food in, oh, sometimes in the containers, the, the big black cans, they leave food in the bottom. Now, I don't know if you need to give them the code to that, uh, water thing. Because they could go in there and wash it out if they need to, or whatever, I don't know if you need to do that or not, add that in there.
If they have it clean when they run it.
What else was I gonna say here? There was one other thing I had checked, and I'm, I'm glad you addressed the kitchen stuff, because I was gonna address that. But basically, um, I think that's all I needed to, because you really cover a lot.
Ms. Lopez, when you were talking about the occupancy, did you say two sixty or two sixteen?
Two sixteen.
Two sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
But they had a, 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 an account in there, I think they had like two hundred and eighty-two dollars, I said, um, eighty-two people, capacity. I said, well, where did this come from? And I knew it was wrong, but I didn't know it until I dug back into my files and found that.
That came from the Fire Department, didn't it, and the occupancy inspection?
It, it would be on your permit. That number should be on the permit, if it's not, then I would suggest you go back through the Fire Department and get that, uh, have them check it out again. Because two hundred and eighty-two people, oh, no, 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 no. Anyway, I can't think of anything, you, you, you corrected most of it.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I realize I'm not a chef, I don't even like to cook, but-
Talk in the mic, please, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm looking at this too. The difference, we don't have a con, we don't have a convection oven, we have a microwave.
It's, it's been replaced with a microwave, so it doesn't-
So-
But I think they were talking, I think this was made up before the Alamee Center.
We don't need to put it on there.
Before, yeah, before the Alamee thing, because it did have a stove in there.
Correct, and oven, that's, yeah.
Yeah, so I-
A convection oven, but it's been replaced with a microwave, a commercial microwave. Yes, ma'am, and it, remember when it burned up the counter and all that, it died a slow death thereafter. Yes, yes, ma'am, Ms. Fear, thank you for your patience.
Thanks, I'm glad you mentioned the, um, numbering the pages, that frustrates me as well. So, I have page eight, starting as this is page one.
Okay.
So, under events requiring a special event permit, you got, under B there, you have an extra, um, period, under C, you all of a sudden put a capital C period, it needs to be corrected. Um, moving on to page ten, which the top of the page says type of reservation required, and has the check marks. In the middle there, if yes, you need a space, please provide a copy of your IRS five oh one C, and then there's parentheses and some extra space and a J, I don't know what that J is for, and you're missing your parentheses at the end there, then all of a sudden, the size of your box for no change to a tiny little, um, no. Signature of applicants, missing the semicolon at the end. I have to say, it's very, it's like that, very professional, you have extra lines in here, just, all you have to do is delete back and you'll get rid of some of these lines. I mean, I feel like it's not proofread. You have three people in the office, I think everyone should probably be reviewing every single resolution or document like this before it comes to us, sitting up here making the corrections. Throughout the document, you sometimes go two decimals, sometimes you go without decimals, pick one, so you either go two, keep it a great, same, or, you know, get rid of them. And then, we, we start doing like caps here and there, so sometimes additional hours, additional is capped, hours is not. Then the next line, both are capped. Your special rate Monday through Thursday, the thousands missing the comma. You mentioned the duplicate of the facility rental cleanup checklist, there's two there, you've mentioned the, all those task boxes, I think they're supposed to be next to the, everything that's below there.
Yes, ma'am.
But this could've been, you know, cleaned up prior to this meeting, um, a lot of Isaac could've looked at it. And you mentioned the placement of the sentence, I understand and have read the cleaning instructions thoroughly, that should be-
Align to it, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fear. Anyone else, yes, or Mr. Arnold?
Some really good feedback from everybody, um, trying to make this a, a-
Always is. It always is. Yes, sir.
I think you've got some residents that care, you know, that's, that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
If, if this room was empty, it'd be a whole different situation.
Yes, sir.
With that said, my two, and you're on the same path as I was, but I would clarify and say, I'm a big fan of headers and footers. Down, uh, the footer here, one of ten, or whatever that page is, so it's not just page one, it kind of gives more clarity to it. And then in addition, some type of date that says adopted by, so that you know the day of the form, and I go to FDOT, when they have forms, they always put down the form and then the date of the form, so you have a reference point to that.
For the IRS, yes, sir.
And then at the top, I would put, on, on the same header, City of Archer deposits and cancellation policy on every page, so that you know exactly what you're looking at.
Thank you, thank you, sir, very much, anyone else?
Can I just mention one thing?
Yes, ma'am, be timely, please, yes, ma'am, please come to the podium.
Well, Deanna, will this document include the fees?
The what? I, I didn't-
I mean, like the fees.
The fee structure?
You, the instructions on you're gonna have it for one hour, two hour, three hours, and additional hours.
It is on there, it is in there.
It is in here?
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's too many pages, I can't see, okay, let's see here, maybe it's in the front.
It's on the second to last page.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, second to the last page, okay.
Page eleven of twelve.
This, yeah, we need to fix this, I don't wanna look.
Got anyone else?
I'm pretty sure we've got.
Okay. All right, the additional, um, amended cha, changes provided by the constituent of the audience added, do I have an amended first and second again? But those changes were done, you got them, okay. All those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, with changes. Nays like sign, motion carries four zero. Next is our boundary survey cost, Macmillan Survey Incorporated, item number two.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably Deanna's item, but I'm just gonna jump in because it pertains to these land purchases that we've been talking about. This is in regards to the Mary Hope and Historical Society surveys to fix their encroachment issues. Our office candidly had a moment of pause because it's thirty-six hundred dollars to have the surveys done. Given the financial status of the city, obviously, that's something in your hands, um, but there is a reason that we didn't plow ahead on it. I will say that on the opposite side of Magnolia Street, where we're selling the other, or we're talking about selling the other CSX parcel, Mr. Arnold went out and got the survey on, he footed the bill to get the survey, um, to provide the legal description such that we could effectuate a, a contract for sale of property. So, the city didn't bore any of the cost of that.
Okay, for, and again, we haven't even had a motion or a second, and I'm gonna recuse myself of whatever decisions we make on this, because I could be in a personal game with my spouse owning this one property, um, and trying to get the boundary straightened out for the last seven and a half years. I understand from the last conversation that Mrs. Hope had with your office attorneys, that there would be consideration that she would bear the cost of the survey. She's not gonna bear the, I can speak for her, she's not gonna bear the cost of the additional surveying for the Archer Historical Society, just because of scale of economics.
And the email, I apologize, keep going.
She was willing to accept surveying costs and then whatever appraisal of the square footage, once it was determined, which it's already been determined once, and I guess it'll be determined again. So, my question is, the only cost is the encroaching Historical Society building property in question here? As far as the burden of cost and who's gonna bear that? Because it'll be reimbursed by the person once the agreement is signed.
What do you mean it'll, what do you mean it will be?
Be added to the cost.
I don't know that the city has the ability to front the thirty-six hundred dollars.
I, I don't care about thirty-six, I'm about the two thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to proceed forward.
My response remains the same, I don't know that the city has the ability to front twenty-eight hundred dollars.
No, and no to both questions, we do not have the funds right now, and no, we didn't budget for it.
Okay, if a memorandum of understanding would be rewritten, that's already been signed once by Mrs. Hope, if it could be created again, and I'm just speaking on behalf of her, she should've been present tonight, we knew we're getting into this. And that was signed, and that fund was paid in advance to settle that, would that please be able to move that boundary problem and resolve it?
This is the last thing we're waiting on, is a legal description, we have the appraisal, we just need a legal description.
And I'm just sharing that with you all, if you need something signed to approve this, to please shut the seven and a half years of trying to get a boundary line on a property straightened out.
Can the individual not do it themselves?
Do, do-
The city would have to order that, because it's city property at this point.
But this, could the individual do what themselves?
The, um, partial boundary and description.
I think that's a, I think that's a conflict of interest to accept anybody else's, if it's not ordered by the city. I can't believe that we're accepting Arnold Construction and their survey versus our order for the survey.
When I bought my house, I had to do my survey for my title insurance.
Yeah, surveys by other people aren't inherently problematic, in fact, the surveyor has to sign off on it with their license on the line.
This was part of the discussion the last seven and a half years, and it was determined that it would be a conflict of interest.
And I understand, but at this point in time, the city doesn't have the money, and if the individual is willing to do it, go for it.
Madam Attorney, what would it, what would it take for this longtime resident to have this resolved, please?
The email says twenty-eight hundred dollars for the partial boundary and one description, which would be Mary Hope's property, and thirty-six forty if we were to add on the Historical Society's description and boundary survey.
If the city does it, but if, if the owner does it as it's been accepted by Arnold Construction, if Mrs. Hope finds her own surveyor certified and does it, and presents it to the attorney, can we move forward on that?
The commission then could vote whether or not to sell her the property.
So, can you? So, could we not, just a question, maybe a compromise, could we not make, do a vote to sell her the property contingent on her survey?
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to come back for a vote anyways for the sale contract, I mean, you can't approve that ahead of time, but-
That's what the memorandum of, of understanding signed and dated on, on record in the city already says, with a price per square foot, and now it's going to be reappraised, Commissioner White, because we've waited so long. And now, you know, we're saying that this survey financially can't be paid by the city. If that property owner finds their own surveyor certified at whatever price it is.
Sure, yeah.
Who shopping, that's why Mr. Arnold probably did it, because he's not paying what the city pays with Macmillan's survey. I'd like to know who surveyed that, it hadn't come forward before us, right?
No, not yet.
Not yet. Okay, then. I, I, I don't want to have a conflict, but I would like this to move forward, so, but that has, that does not answer this talking about the Archer Historical Society. We're mixing water and oil, has, I mean, and we've got a person that's speaking on behalf of the Archer Historical Society here this evening, I, I don't know whether they want to, I don't, I don't have any business with the Archer Historical Society being added to this with this property owner from twenty sixteen till now.
Well, my concern would go to both of the individuals, the City of Archer does not have the money to do either one.
Understood.
Or both.
But that doesn't waylay the owner from producing a survey, as the other property owner has done, and then bring this forward as an agenda.
Absolutely, that would be perfectly fine.
And what about the appraisal, has it been done?
The appraiser's done, the appraisal's done.
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 Has it moved from ninety-five cents a square foot?
I think it's a dollar twenty-six.
Okay, for, just for information, I'm sure this property owner will do that, to try to proceed forward with ninety years of encroachment on her property. With, with the CSX property, ninety plus years. Ma'am? You would've what? CSX wouldn't sell it to her grandmother for less than seventy-seven thousand dollars.
So, anyway, that solves that problem?
I, no, I, I recuse myself, you all have to make a decision.
Yeah, the decision before you tonight is whether or not to authorize the thirty-six hundred or the twenty-eight hundred dollar survey. It gave me pause, and that's why I put it on the agenda.
So, we, huh?
Do we even need a motion if we don't make one?
Right.
No, if, if you don't make a motion, then the city doesn't pursue the cost associated with that, it doesn't prohibit, it doesn't prohibit.
I wasn't, I wasn't gonna make a motion, I was gonna-
And I don't wanna mix the two, I, I mean, if you all want to vote on this, and then-
Well, we weren't making a motion, we, I was agreeing with Commissioner White, that if the two entities wanted to do it and to move the process along, then we can just vote on it, to, to do the sale after the fact.
Right, when the time comes when they bring forward a, a legal description and a boundary survey of what they'd like to purchase.
That's my opinion.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry, the Diaz camera went out, but we can, there's still sound, just for anyone that's on YouTube, pardon the interruption.
So.
So, I still think you need to make a motion to either proceed or to not do this, is what I'm asking for.
Is that what you need?
Yeah, I think for record- Yeah, I think for record, and then if owners do their due diligence, present the surveys to the city administrator, administrator to the legal, then you can agenda it, correct? If it's, if those surveys are reviewed and accepted by legal.
It won't even be me, really, I mean, they're, they are what they are, it'll be up to you guys at that point.
But I, I would certainly like it to go based on the history behind this, so.
Absolutely.
And what's on record with memorandum of, to null and void those things that are on record right now.
So, it sounds like a lot.
It's a step one, that's what I'm hearing.
My, my motion is to not go with this payment.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor.
And to ask.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, you've actually recused yourself, so you've technically passed the gavel.
And if I'm making a motion, I have to.
Pass the gavel as well.
Yep.
If, if you're gonna second, okay. Um, gosh, I forgot what I was saying, okay. To not go with the recommendation that was given, but to, um, ask the two entities to do their own surveying and bring it back with, with the proof to us before the sale. All right, second, do I have a second?
I second.
I have a motion, Vice Mayor, I have a second, Commissioner, any, any discussion, much ado. Turn it off?
Lori Costello, citizen, I don't know how anybody ever got to where the seller is paying for a survey. The buyer always pays for a survey, always, you know, and they can pick who they want. A survey is legal and binding, just like, uh, she said, they have to put their stamp on it, okay? I, I, I don't even know how y'all got that information.
I just said, when we bought our house.
Exactly.
We bought, we paid for the survey.
Right, and the only way that that would be different is if the seller's already had a survey, and the closing company said, okay, that survey's okay, because sometimes they just need a boundary survey, and sometimes they need to show septic or something like that, depending, okay?
There are two surveys already completed through the years.
Okay, and.
They're old.
Did, okay, so is all you gotta do is show them to the title company, whoever's closing, and if they are okay.
They're not accepted, they were done by the county, and they're not accepted, according to legal.
Well, county doesn't matter, it, it's whoever's doing the closing.
This property was given to the city of Archer as a donation.
Okay.
Contingent on the county surveying the abutting property owners of note. This is where the Kirkland and Maddox and Hope that you questioned about from 2019 was being brought up in those minutes. There were surveys completed by the county in the transaction in the giving the properties. It was contingent on those being taken care of, those abutting property owners that had issues with the CSX property.
So that was never done?
No. It started in 2016, Lori, and it's 2025.
Okay, so I guess all that has to be done, even before y'all have a survey done?
No, this is why I'm looking at legal and saying we need to clarify all those records and make sure that they're null and void if we're moving in a new direction, and we are.
If there is a survey, and I think we've had this discussion before, and I've asked for it, and I haven't received it. If there is a survey that resolves the encroachment issues, then we don't need a new survey. However, in the past, when we've had this discussion, nothing has been produced to that, and if we find a survey, great.
I, I have it in my box, but I'll present it in to legal and.
Perfect.
But it, it doesn't, it doesn't satisfy the new owner. Now we have a new owner of the Maddox property, of which all that's in there, so we don't need to. You, you can look at it and see as we move forward. Yeah, and we've left out the Archer Historical Society, Ms. Green, so.
You're talking about the age of a, a survey, and it's only good for a certain number of years, and we've been working on this thing about fifteen years, I think.
Since 2016.
You have, in the, in the attorney's office, they have our survey. When this started several years ago, Clay Martin, I think, was, was our attorney at the time. And I think that that is an exorbitant price to survey that, that parcel, which I'm thinking is mu, not more than an acre. How much are we talking about?
It's, it's less than that, it's where, it's just carve-offs. It, I mean, it's.
It's a driveway.
It's carve-offs, especially for the Historical Society. I mean, it, it's literally just moving it over far enough such that the building's not on CSX, what was CSX's property. It, it's really not much.
Not much like ten feet? We don't own anything on the, the north side.
I have, I have no concept of how many square feet it is, candidly. That's just not something that I know anything about. I, I just know from looking at the aerials, it's not a whole lot.
Well, who's deciding the footage then, when we go for a survey? The surveyor's gonna decide the footage?
Or the property owner, if the property owner obtains the survey, which probably.
That's you, that's the city.
The future property owner, the buyer, as Ms. Costello said. It is very standard that the buyer produces the survey.
I think we can do better than, am I hearing, what, what are you, the price, what, what are you saying the file?
Thirty-six hundred dollars for both.
That's pretty steep. McMillan can do better than that.
I have other surveyors' companies that is a toll-free number, is all you do is put in the parcel or parcels and numbers, and.
Can you give it to him after the meeting?
Yes.
I don't need it, I have Bruce Delaney, who is my brother-in-law, who gave the property, the entire CSX property to the city, to the county, and the county then turned around and gave it to the city. I can assure you, my brother-in-law can assist me with the survey, thank you.
Bill Lewandowski, citizen, I don't have a dog at this fight, fortunately. However, it would be helpful if the city attorney, when, when a member says they're gonna recuse themselves, lays out the ground rules. Because as I'm sitting back here listening to this.
I'm just providing information, that's all, and I can do that, I cannot vote, I can provide information.
Right, right, so that's, okay, so let me finish, please. So what I'm asking is that the city attorneys put the ground rule, because I'm sitting back here as a member of the public, I'm saying, well, Mr. Hope is still speaking, he's providing information, he's sort of running the meeting. Other jurisdictions I've lived in, the individual had to leave the room. So, and I, and I know this is Florida, and it's different, so it'd be helpful to inform the public just what the ground rules are when, when a member says, I'm recusing myself.
Sure.
So you all understand what's going on, that's my point.
But I can't provide information, and that's all I'm doing.
In Florida, there's no requirement to leave the room. However, we do have some jurisdictions wherein whoever's recusing themselves steps down from the dais. And I will say that that does typically assist in the separation that I think Mr. Bill Lewandowski is looking for.
I, I respect that, but the longevity of this issue at hand needs provided information, Mr. Lewandowski. Because you have no dog in the fight.
We, um, if you're gonna speak, it should be when one of their, them are not speaking, and.
Certainly.
So, we have a vote, anyone else? We have a motion, we have a motion, we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries three zero. The mayor recused himself.
It's a lot the appropriate form, be glad to, don't get any doubts.
There you go.
Thank you. Next item is discussion on city-owned previously donated parcel, new business, agenda item three.
Mr. Mayor, this is the piece of property next to the Bethlehem Presbyterian Church that I think back in 2019, I say you all, but the dais at the time voted to donate, and I think that some conversation has happened among staff that I, I think Deanna can probably shed light on about whether or not we actually wanna proceed with donating, or if you would like to change it for purposes of surplus instructions for sale.
I wasn't pervy to all the emails that went back and forth, I could only find the one that's in the agenda packet, so I really don't know the, all the ins and outs of what happened between the church and staff at the time that was in the middle of it. I just know another person, a few other people from the community have asked about buying that parcel outright to do something with it, so that's why I had asked the attorneys, what do we, what should we do, or what should staff do? So that's why it's on the agenda to see if the commission would like to reverse the donation and move it to a surplus so we can get some funds out of the property, and then hopefully if they bill to be taxes and so forth. Is that what you're looking for, Danielle?
Perfect, and Mr. Mayor, we would come back with a resolution to solidify that, we just need some guidance tonight as to whether or not that's even interest of the.
Okay, I just have one question, there's no records of communication by, by letter writing between the Bethlehem Presbyterian Church Board of Trustees and the previous manager regarding purchasing at the appraisal completion?
Mayor Hope, this, that, all I could find is what's in this agenda copy.
On that, on that day.
Yes, sir.
But there's no record of letters and transferring back and forth with the board of trustees agreeing to the price that was solidified.
Because I heard it was nineteen thousand, but I don't have, no, sir, if you have it.
Again, just for cleaning up records, I need to present that to ensure that that's on record.
Yeah, because Clay Walker was, Clay.
Said it could, said that, you, someone please remember that.
The attorney, I remember.
And said we could not donate to the Bethlehem, that decision was made by Clay Martin, and then it was appraised. And it took a year and a half to have it appraised, of which then there was letter writing between the board of trustees and the Bethlehem Presbyterian Church. Only reason I know that is because I'm the check writer at the church, and I saw the letter, and I have a record of the, of the letter.
I do remember us making a motion to donate.
Answer your question, that's where the nineteen or whatever, because at that appraisal time, that's what it was being appraised at. Then it was stopped again, I'm not recusing myself because I'm providing information, Mr. Lewandowski, and this one as well, it's as old as Methuselah. The engineer on record said there'd have to be a lift station there. And so it slowed the train to a stop until the determination of how large that lift station would be, and how many square feet would have to then be removed, or, and/or a new survey done to see what the actual survey said was available for surplus property, of which then it would have to be reappraised because it's been the length of time it has been. And the church was on waiting until that was completed, and the board of trustees is still waiting for that, and that's been the last.
That was my understanding, that's been my understanding. I thought we donated it to the church because it was the, they were the only ones that could really get any use out of it.
And, and there is letter transmittal of saying, well, Clay Martin, how should I have records of all this? And it says what would be the purpose of that additional property, and it, and then the church said unknown at this time, which didn't, that the trustees didn't want a close abutment of anything around the church based on the property size that it is now. And Clay Martin said it has to be, to be donated, it has to be for public use. It has to be assigned to park if it was gonna be donated. And that's when the board of trustees came back and, and in letter writing said, please appraise it and tell us what that appraisal would be, and then we'll tell you whether we accept that or not.
So it sounds like one way or another, we need to change it to be not donation, but rather for sale.
So this is just to not donate it, and that's the action being taken.
Correct, that's, that's, I'm just looking for guidance that that is the direction.
I don't have to recuse myself, just that I'm giving knowledge about it because I have no bear in the room, and.
Then it will go out for bid?
You would follow your surplus sale policy.
Sale policy. Once that survey is completed, has that survey been completed with the lift station cut out?
That's a Kimley Horn question, I can find out.
And that's gonna be a cost to have that done. So, all right, and again, that, I spilled milk, but moving forward with that one, so. All right, based on that, do I have a motion to consider this?
To consider it, and go with it, or, I mean.
Well, it's a discussion, but, but I'll entertain a motion to proceed with the, with the direction we just talked about.
And see, I'm not even comfortable with that if we're gonna need it for a lift station. And also, who's gonna pay the cost?
Because we're gonna come up with a survey issue again, which the buyer would then.
Exactly, that is where I meant.
Survey with the cutout, and then there would be a work order from Kimley Horn regarding how large is that lift station.
Until we get some more information on this, I'm not, I don't wanna move forward on it.
You can just table it for the time being.
Okay, then that's gonna be my motion's table.
Discussion, because the biggest thing, it's the biggest, I mean, it's not gonna be donated, so you could make a motion to that effect this evening, I think that's what's clearing up with these records of 2019.
I don't know if it's not gonna be.
Right, so.
I don't know if it's not gonna be donated, it's, it's, in the minutes it says it was donated, I'm gonna stand behind that. If the church don't want it, then we'll go to that.
But it, does Clay Martin need to attest to something that he's the one that stopped it from being donated, unless it had a public use?
I can call him tomorrow and ask him.
I, I mean, his homework, if that's available.
Sure, that's fine.
Because he's got it somewhere in his.
No, I'm happy to do it, no problem.
Could you also try to reach out to Kimley Horn to see about the lift station of, um.
I'll check our records first, so as to not incur.
Right, okay.
A charge for.
Anything.
Anything, um, and see if there's not somewhere wherein they've described where the lift station is located.
Because there was representation from Kimley Horn that said, well, that can't be surplus because of the lift station. And that's, I just remember discussions about how big has the lift station gotta be on that one something acre parcel or whatever, so.
So if you're just tabling it for the time being, I'm happy to bring back that information.
Do I have a motion to table it until next month?
White made the motion, I made the second.
Okay, would you amend your mo, oh, she made a motion to table it to next month?
She made the motion to table it, and to table it, and I second it.
Okay, any other discussion from the dais? Any discussion from the constituents in the audience? Yes, sir.
So, since I'm always interested in his, Bob Kusicki. That property, when I first got here in the early nineties, was Bass, Berenger, and.
Mayberry.
Yeah, so they had that property, the whole property of Walton's area. They were gonna build stuff there, and then when they found out that that area is.
Low lying.
Very low lying, as a matter of fact, during this rainy season, you walk back there, and it's swampy in that area on the northwest side of that, which takes almost half of that. Because you can see the contour map, and it shows you how, from the top of the hill where I'm at, it goes all down in that area. So, and I know the lift station's supposed to be in there. So besides the lift station, was there anything, I, I know that's why she separated the land, to make it and says, you know, give it to the city, she don't have to pay taxes on it, and she donated it willingly, they did, I should say. And then they still have the property above there.
As a swamp.
Right, because they couldn't do nothing with it, as I said. They had people come in, look at it, and do different things, and I said, nope, isn't gonna happen. So that's why it got separated into two parcels, and then when they found out they couldn't do nothing, says, city, if you want it, we're gonna give it to you. That's how that all came about.
That traded that piece of property for the.
Carol.
Carol Belts.
That's right.
And the backyard, there was a lot between Carol Belts property and a big backyard now, that's, that was a swamp.
So, I mean.
I went a part of it, I was saying that was a Mayberry swamp.
And that's why I thought when they got donated it to the church, it was like, well, they're, they can make it maybe like playground, you know, certain things you can do with it, and knowing that that's low there. Housing and stuff, probably ain't gonna happen. Not unless you maybe bring in truckloads of dirt or something.
Yeah.
But other than that, um, yeah, it's, it's quite, and so that's the basic history of that, before the city got it, so.
Yes, sir, thank you, anyone else? Yes, sir, Mr. Arnold.
Okay, going back to the 2016 notes. Wanted to point out something I didn't cover last time that I thought was.
Mr. Arnold, it's on, it's on the motion to table this, it's not com, it's not, um, public comment.
It's just regarding the motion to table it to get gathered further information.
Okay.
If the comment is pertinent to that decision we're gonna make, keep it to that, if you will, please.
Okay, so, I'm just wanting to cover the fact that it was donated, I still don't understand. It, it was donated, but yet the city, the, the church didn't take, a lot of things were donated that day.
We were, I'll give you quick.
That meeting.
Speed, we were provided the normal January surplus property list the year before this came up. PBJ, church and building got, I'm sorry, LPJ, I always think peanut butter, I'm sorry.
LPJ, I always think peanut butter, I'm sorry. The first medical building for Archer is the little building next to the LBJ Ministry. That building and that property was donated, the reason it was allowed is because they were going to have teaching classes for CNAs in that building for public use. It passed the, the smell check. When the Bethlehem Presbyterian Church did not determine what public use, because that was a requirement from Mr. Clay Martin and his records, it had, it, it, it had to be presented in an acceptable way for it to be donated. The Bethlehem Presbyterian Church trustees said, we cannot determine that we're going to use it, we do not commit to using it for a public use. They just, they, they weren't going to have the liability of a park, a walking trail park was suggested just by Mr. Martin, something of that nature, and the trustee said, no, then you'll have to purchase it. The trustee said, okay, appraise it.
Okay, again.
And that's the, that's the noted record where this, this property has gone from donation to now an interested party that it buts to it with, with an appraisal price provided.
Okay. How many members up there are members of the church? I think you are.
I'm the, I, I think I'm the only one.
You're the only one on the, the diocese there that's a member of the church?
And I was speaking on behalf, and the letter writing on behalf was presented from our board of trustees, just to keep the ball rolling on the process. And there was, there is records of notes from our minister representing the board of trustees with the previous management, there's emails of the effect, there are letter writings of the effect, signed by the trustees and the management.
Y'all, forgive me, I still don't follow. City's broke, I don't know the financial condition of what it was in two thousand nineteen, but it looks to me, if I'm reading this correctly, the city was donating a lot of their property that were on buildable lots.
And determining what, which could be sold. There were three lots that were actually donated for housing, affordable housing in Holly Hills through the.
And that's, that's beautiful, but they were donated and the city got no revenue, but maybe they did.
Taxpayers, yes, not the church, not the two churches of consideration, but certainly the others with the land, land use that were affordable housing built in Holly Hills, those became then on, on the tax rolls.
Okay.
It was an exercise we'd done every year since two thousand twelve, except the last four or five years, we haven't done that as an exercise in January to look at surplus property every year and see what the list has, and assess value, and not, not to donate, but just to determine what would be released either through dot gov or through donation. We haven't done that in four or five years.
Okay, as I just read this motion, Commissioner White motion for number six, number seven on the list for donation, donate number two to Bethlehem Presbyterian Church, and the remaining of the properties be placed on gov deals.
Yes.
So maybe there was just that, and then donate the current LPG, LPJ property? So I'm trying to.
That's the church and the building property.
I've often questioned, how did the city of Archer go broke? How did that happen? I think Tony Hammond was a big part of it. There's, there's problems when you're not paying the IRS. But also, I look back and I'm, I scratch my head and I say, how, how many properties did the city of Archer donate and give away? Because I'm aware of a little bit of a, the Equogen and the land swap, and now they got property up here that they can't use or not going to use, and, and again, I just kind of say, how did we get here? Going forward, let's try and make good decisions and let's stop donating land that we can possibly sell. And if the church wants to buy it, then, and pay for it, then I'm all for it.
Absolutely, I'm one hundred percent with you, understand.
Put it out there on gov deals and see what happens, type thing.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, let's go to a vote, all of us in favor of tabling this? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, nays, likes, and motion carries, four zero. And agenda item four, interim city manager evaluation results.
Mr. Mayor, you have, you have a summation of the five evals we received detailing the points, you know, attributed to each question. I believe Deanna included the, or you guys have previously seen the eval results, but this is in one, one place. At the very bottom, sorry, at the very bottom, I put the annual pay raise consideration, there was zero, one, two, or three percent, and so for each of you, it's got whatever you put along the bottom as well as an average.
But she gets no raise because we are under a no raise, hiring, firing, no raise.
Correct, it's just, I just wanted to give you the full.
So at this point, we're in discussion regarding this?
Well, you're doing above average.
Correct.
What did you say, Commissioner White? I'm sorry, I didn't.
She's, she's doing above average.
And.
So will we do another one in December?
To her evaluation month, and that, that.
June.
June.
This was, yeah, this was for her, for that.
Right.
But we're under that, we're also, how do you give her a raise, as a manager or as a clerk? So we said, we'll wait.
Well, I think a lot of it will depend on what position she's occupying come December, I don't know that you could make a decision about that today.
But there's an evaluation of records to secure that she's doing her job and what areas she may need improvement, what areas she's not needs to emphasize on. That was my purpose in doing that, is because.
But the evaluation was done as, in her current position, so that still doesn't.
It was for the period of time.
But it was for interim manager position, the way it was stated.
How did, how did you define it for yourself?
I understood it was as the interim city manager position.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's the evaluation that was due based on the period of time from June to June, correct? I mean.
Yes, yes.
It's for record, that's the period, so that there's a succinct period of evaluation that's been completed, and that was my. And that was my concern, because she was due it in June, so.
I understood it was as the interim city manager, that we were doing it as the interim city manager.
Everything said manager.
Manager's evaluation. My answers would have been different because she is, her strengths and weaknesses are different as a city manager as opposed to a clerk.
Okay, all right, for, for record, again, this is just discussion, so we're all on the same page, I just need to facilitate, when do you feel you should get your next evaluation, in the next evaluation period?
If I'm no longer city interim city manager.
June.
Sometime, right, it doesn't really matter to me, I mean, it's, it's hard because it's two things at once, but.
I want us to be on the same playing field, though.
I mean, if that, if that job is finished and I go back to deputy city clerk, then it would change again, like Commissioner White's saying.
It would be January first to December thirty first would be the evaluation period then, so your evaluation period would change, correct, based on when you go back to your position?
That one figures it.
Or it's based on your hire date?
Everyone else's is on hire date.
Hire date, so why are we making an exception of that? It would be.
That was a question a month ago. I'm done. I mean, that was a question a month ago, but you wanted it done.
Yes, ma'am, because she was.
So you just answered your own question.
But we owed, but we owed it to her for her performance, for the period, because I felt the employee needed to know where she stood in her position, no matter what she's doing, her contribution to the city. It wasn't because what I wanted, it was in fairness to the employee and their evaluation period, so.
Now you know and you don't get a raise.
Well, let me throw another option on the table, and I'm not trying to spend bad money on good or good on bad, you certainly can make a decision, and I'm just sharing it to this diocese, for determination and it be deferred until a certain period.
So I'm just ready to move.
I mean, because of record, that's what happens sometimes, so, it could be deferred until the year twenty twenty six evaluation period, whatever the determination was this year, and that's legal, right? Ms. Council?
I think the problem is, is that when she goes back as deputy city clerk, she doesn't get an eval. The city manager controls at that point, so I think part of the problem is, is you're trying to make a decision about something three months from now that might be totally irrelevant.
Irrelevant, okay.
So I, I think you just accept the evaluation and you're in a freeze right now on raises anyways?
Okay, all right. Reports, correspondence, communication, none? City managers report? Deanna?
I know you didn't get it until, well, I emailed it and it was uploaded to the website, but did anyone have any questions? I feel like I'm missing something, but I really don't know what. I just know, I'm Doge, I know when Ms. Cusello was asking, so we got the original request with all the documents that were all sent out, okay, then the second one, I did one extension request, but all cities got it, so Dallas did share how Newberry did theirs because it's not easy, so now we have to, so I asked them for August twenty eighth because our audit will be complete by then, because we have too much we're trying to do at once, so I haven't heard from them, so I'm assuming it's okay. And then I have an email that I haven't got to yet from Doge requesting more documents from the first middle we sent in, I don't know what's in that just yet, so that's where we're at with Doge. Like I said, the audits start tomorrow, the pump house repair that was brought up, Public Works looked at it, the whole thing needs to, all the wood has to come off, it's in by the community center. So the wood alone is eleven hundred dollars, it would take them a week to complete, we'll either need to quotes or wait till our financial situation improves, because if we're long at number two, we can't pull our little bitty staff off of doing what they're doing to fix that unless that's what you guys would like to do, was to expense the pump house repair. So it's going to be eleven hundred plus all the other supplies, plus a week of our employees doing the work, they said it's not like an easy, you take it off and put it on, the whole thing needs to be redone.
And what, what's that?
The pump house at the community center, like on the corner there, it has rotted wood everywhere, so I was just letting you know, that's, our recommendation is to wait, we can get quotes and you can see how much the toll is going to be if you'd like, or we can wait until our financial situation improves, I just let you know that they did that research to look at it.
How bad is it, Deanna? Do you know? I can go drive down there.
Yeah, I asked Calvin, he said it's pretty, just they have the whole, everything has to come off and be redone, so it's going to be kind of costly, I mean, yes, it needs to be done, I agree, the water's, you know, remains.
Discussing priorities, did we determine what the quote was for the splash pad? Did we get exactly what we need for the splash pad?
We did not, no, not, no.
To me, that's a higher priority than the pump house at the Archer Community Center to at least look at quotes and see.
Say that one more time.
The splash pad.
Right, is more important than repairing our pump house? I just made sure I heard.
In the pump house, yes.
Okay, the, I know the splash was two thousand something, if I remember correctly.
Did you give us a quote to do it?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Or we just said, we're going to close the splash pad?
No, I gave you the amount because it was the second time, and those brass fittings are expensive, we have a bill for totally different brass fittings.
And plus the labor time for Public Works to.
These brass parts are a fortune, so.
And again, the only reason I'm bringing that, I'm just concerned about the non-use closed situation and potential vandalizing, vandalizing, and it's a service for our community versus a pump house is just an asset.
Well, I'd rather than vandalize the splash pad than buy water. I'm sorry.
I don't want them vandalizing anything, we got.
No, I don't, yes, ma'am.
So, so we had a short discussion, don't leave yet, I need to ask you. So one of the things that came up that Commissioner Penny said, and I totally agree with, is could we see the footage and see if any of us could identify the kids and go after the parents for repair if, because we have cameras there, and this has happened so many times that we've spent, and every time is like over two thousand dollars, that's a lot, yeah, it's like the splash pad, that's a lot of money, and my opinion is that these kids are going to continue to vandalize until somebody stops them. So if their parents are not held responsible, then they're going to continue to do this and we're going to keep having to figure out how to pay for it.
Do we ever call the police?
Yes, yes, but the problem with this is only part of that is vandal, the other part is where the health department.
Yeah, I thought that's what, the health department shut it down before.
Well, if we could just, if we could just keep on the vandalism, vandalism question, let me finish my line of, so we, we call the police and then what happens? Nothing?
Nothing, because the camera is so blurry, you can't make out, you can make out that it's your kids, but not.
Who?
Let's see, let's see the body, let me see it.
Well, I might, here's why I'm asking this, it would be if one of you could identify the kids and then you call the police and you make a report, and the state's attorney's office pursues it for vandalism, their burden of proof is so much higher than in a civil case. So it's nice, because once the, once they've been convicted, you, you come in with your civil case to recoup costs, and your case is basically done for you, which puts your attorney's fees way down compared to having to build a case from scratch, so it's, it's using the state's resources to outsource the evidence collection for you. You know, they've got a, beyond a reasonable doubt standard, you're going to have a preponderance of the evidence standard, so we're talking, you know, a hundred percent, ninety-nine percent, fifty-one percent, you know, so if they've already gone and improved it beyond a reasonable doubt, it's very easy for us to then come in and collect for property damage. So I'd be interested to know if you guys can identify the kids on the video, and then see what the sheriff's office says about it. Did you, can I, I should have to go to the bathroom.
Yeah, 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 that was all I wanted to know from you, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And, and again, just in discussion about the splash pad, the health department and the needed repairs were the expensive brass parts that needed to be replaced, correct? I mean, that was from their citing of things that needed to be taken care of.
I don't, I don't know if the brass part was part of it now, I haven't looked at it in a while.
Or was it just chemical imbalance, or?
Oh, no, it was chemical, there's parts, there's a lot of labor that needs to be done, you know, I think it's a five years old.
There's a big part missing too, it's got to be replaced.
A big what?
Part, I mean, a high dollar part is what.
From vandalism or from just wear and tear?
Just wear and tear.
Wear and tear.
Right, so it's a mixture, it was a mixture, repair and vandalism, health department shut us down, yes.
And is there signage down there explaining that it's under repair?
I think it just says close until further notice, I believe.
It does.
Now that kids are back in school.
I'm just really concerned about vandalism because the heat, and it hasn't happened yet, but, you know, wishful, non-thinking or whatever, but if the signage could just say for repairs, then.
And I could climb the fence and get our water.
Yeah, the pump is bad, is what Scott said, I knew something was bad out there.
Okay.
So.
We'll just table that until you get quotes?
Do you want quotes?
Do you all even want her to exercise quotes at this point?
I think you're talking more towards ten thousand dollars, but I could be incorrect on that.
No, it's not affor, in my opinion, it's not affordable for that at this time. That's my opinion, so.
I don't go looking, so you have to go ahead.
Yeah, ask Calvin too, please, and then the community center floor waxing, I know it needs to be done, I totally agree with that statement, I just know it's been brought up again, not by, by citizen and by some renter, so do we want to move forward or keep waiting? So I'm just bringing it back up again.
I, I don't think we should do it at this time, and with, with a letter that came from Ms. Adams regarding.
Sorry?
No.
Another subject that we have to pay for.
I was just making sure that, that you guys are on the same page as me, is just to keep waiting for the floor waxing, no, we're just on.
By consensus, you're going to wait?
Did we budget for, is it, did we budget to wax the floors or not?
I don't remember putting that in there, I don't.
There's a maintenance line item, as Ms. Lopez tells us.
And I understand where everybody's at, but I'm telling you something, the fifteen hundred dollars as opposed to having to replace floors is what concerns me, because if you don't.
Putting on sponsors.
If you don't, um.
Maintain it.
Well, cover those floors, you're going to lose those tiles and.
That was why we were talking about, as much as we didn't want to spend it, we wanted to preserve the integrity of the tile itself.
But that's it, and if you don't wax them, you are, so what the problem is going So, what the problem is gonna be, you wanna spend the fifteen hundred dollars to wax floors now or do you wanna spend fifteen thousand in six months or a year? So, I don't know.
You already had the tile contractors of choice, didn't you? Because you had bids?
Yes, you guys have already motioned for it, approved the expense, it just, it was to wait, but there was like no date certain in the motion.
Do we have the money right now?
I would.
I know we don't have any extra.
I would like to wait until.
We don't have any extra, but I mean, if it needs to be done, if that's what you guys approve, we'll get it done.
I would like to wait until we have a profit loss in front of us. I, and I really believe that's coming sooner than later, I mean, based on our emphasis we gave to Mr. Dallas Lee. And I'm not trying to play Russian roulette, Commissioner White, but I just think we can wait another thirty, sixty days just to see where our profit and loss is.
Maybe thirty, maybe thirty.
Yeah.
Maybe thirty days.
I'm still being positive.
Because I was in there, I was in there Saturday, but it was a lot of people, so it was, you know, I didn't see the whole floor.
Okay, I'll, I'll bring it back up again.
Okay, thank you. I mean, don't let it go, but just bring it back when we have a profit loss.
And I know.
It's a high priority.
This is a little bad news. The, in our meeting this morning, the guys were telling me the floor is lifting up a little bit when you come out the kitchen on the right side and then where the door was replaced in the back left.
That one's busted a little bit.
The floor is starting to come up, which is not good either, just as you talk about floor. Because I think that floor, since it's so old, I don't know if we're ever gonna match it. But we'll go there when we get, need to get there, I'm just letting you know.
Gorilla glue does wonders. Kinda wait. Moisture. Moisture when the door didn't, didn't seal over there on that one side, and the kitchen is moisture as well. Because that's usually where the ice chests and drinks and all that come by. Again, I just.
I think there was extra tile in the.
There were at one time, but whether they're still there or not, they were in the back on the left, behind the stage. It was the last place that I, when I physically moved them with the committee we had or whatever. Okay.
That's all I had, that's all, yes.
Okay. Attorney report? Nothing in your report?
Nothing.
And can I just ask you the question?
I'd prefer you didn't.
Oh, okay. It's just for record for us to know.
There's a reason it's.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I just, I was trying to be public, but, okay, I'll just wait. No, it's regarding just matters of, of expense that.
It's an anticipation of litigation, it's not subject to public records right now.
Okay, but we got it, right? It wasn't, it was to all the commission, correct, when you?
It was not.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. All right. And nothing else to report? Commissioner reports, Ms. Penny, Commissioner Penny, Madam Commissioner.
Well, let me see, what have I been up to? Well, I did go to a banquet, it's men, youth development. And I wish we can get some of our Archer young men into this program. Um, it teaches them, um, my little nephew went and he is not a people person. He is a true introvert. And it really brings him out a little bit. He done went golfing, he done went fishing, he went camping. They meet like once a month and it's all teenagers. Some of the kids go to Newberry, Viewhold East Side, and it just teaches, they have mentors um, that deal with them like once, I think they meet like once a month. They do fundraisers and it's just to get them, like some of them are very well spoken and it's some of them, you know, they just need that extra pool because they make them stand and talk in public and at an age of like twelve, that's very hard for some kids. Very hard for me, older than I am. But it, it is a very nice mentoring group. It was very nice and I.
What did you say the name was?
Is, yeah. Yes. And I also went to a tea in Williston and met some of the commissioners from there. Those got all their names. But that was very nice, um, um, they also do scholarships who put on this tea. They, um, had like five recipients this year and each one of them got a thousand dollars, which I think is pretty good. And I did the health fair, I wanna thank the ones who, who came out and came through. And I'll get you the total of how many people, because I got to, um, send emails to the vendors. And, um, thank Mr., I mean, Mayor Hope for the, um, tea and Commissioner, I don't know, Vice Mayor Bailey for some of the, um, door prizes. People be serious about them door prizes, but.
And the food, the food was, was it donated?
Well, um, Haven Hospice, um, donated the salad, the rest I paid for, so.
Thank you very much, I thought you did, because the automobile was excited about their lunch and they met their quota as well, so.
Yeah, and, um, we got eight, um, people who donated.
In three hours, that's, I thought it was good.
Yeah, which, um, she sent me an email, I opened the email today and she was very happy with it because you got to look at it, eight people donated, you gotta do it times three because that's how many each, um, pint can help.
Well, and I'm a double red, so I scared the people to death because they pumped my blood out and then put, like, flew it back in and I turned around, I'm a vampire, don't mind me, whatever. Scared those people to death, I'm a doctor. But double reds are two, so that.
Yeah, so I was.
They were happy though, because they didn't think, they thought it was gonna be a slow bus and it, it was, they were hopping during that three hour.
It was good, I'm al, I'm always the one who, um, always think, ah, I wish more people would've showed up, but, um.
I was proud that Jordan Marla was there with the opioid.
Yeah, because it's.
Task force and.
Yep, because Alachua County, that's why I said, um, for the, um, recreation group, we got to do better to raise more money because Alachua County is still in the top five in the state of Florida for opioid, um, overdosing. And we, I have something on August the twentieth that, um, we trying to get, you'll see some, um, billboards coming up for the opioid task force that I'm on and also some, um, commercials on TV. So, I know the, um.
Very good.
The, um, uh, the youth group here, the, um. Yes. Um, it's, we got to raise more money for that because we have to, um, keep our youth, um, in a positive, doing something positive and letting them know it's more out there. And I was very excited to, um, talk to the young lady, um, who's talked about mental, um, illness and depression and, because just because something don't rock your world, but it can rock somebody else's. Just because, you know, being bullied don't bother you, it can, you know, really detriment to someone else. So, we really, again, I just thank the ones who came out, that's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner White? Okay. Vice Mayor?
I don't have anything either, um, but I did go to the health fair this past weekend. Um, and I actually had some backpacks with school supplies that I forgot to grab out of my room and I saw them yesterday and I was, oh my God, I took all this stuff in.
Kids that had backpacks, those weren't for you?
No.
Where does it come from that?
Oh, those are different vendors, um, giving out, I mean.
And the little satchel, the blue satchel bags, all the blood.
Those was from Meridian and Meridian, the person who was over at Meridian, they are Trillian. So, I was glad to see him there. Um, and the Dave's guy, he's right up the road, he's from Raleigh and his father is the pastor of LPJ. He was there and, um, them the only two.
I knew he was familiar.
She's familiar.
But I did enjoy my time there, I was trying to get back so I can go donate blood and it, yeah, did not work out. So, yeah, I was really proud and when I walked in, I was, I was reflecting and I was hoping that you would be, um, pleased. So, I'm, I'm, I mean, when I say you would feel better than you did last year, every year I'm, I'm gonna be pushing you to do that because I, I feel that the health fair is something that we need, um, yeah, to, um, be in the community.
I thought it was good participation for, yeah.
Um, um.
She wants an overflow.
Yeah, it's that stuff is seen thing.
But. It was, it was good and the people that were there were good, so I enjoyed it, that's it. And my grandbaby enjoyed it.
Okay, the only thing I have is there was no North Central Florida Planning Council meeting in July. It was, um, canceled due to a death from the administrator of, of the council. And then I did attend, um, the, the health fair as far as just setting up the tea for you and giving blood. And that, that's all I have for this month, so that's it. Thank y'all very much for all that you do. Last but not least, public comment period? Yes, sir, Ms. Arnold?
Okay, um, I'm glad that you mentioned the tea, because I had a glass. Some of the best tea I've ever had.
Southern brown Kool-Aid, it's not tea.
Whatever your secret is, I tell you, between the tea and, and the food you made, you really think.
No doubt it came from her.
Restaurant quality type stuff, because I, I taste, I say, where does this come from? This is good. All right, um, going back to the two thousand sixteen, or no, two thousand nineteen, I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen notes. I wanted to read this statement here for the, for part of the meeting minutes. Mayor Bailey stated, "There was a meeting in the past to go over the table of permitted use process. We are moving forward with updating the table of permitted uses in hopes to attract more businesses to come to Archer by reducing the amount of paperwork required to move forward. Wasn't there at the time, but I'm here now to say thank you. Love to see the more businesses."
I don't know that, that happened, but, um.
It's in black and white here, so it was sent by you?
I know, I remember we, I said that and that's what we wanted to do. I'm saying I don't know if that happened because I only know one business that came since then.
Well, your sentiment was there, in, in the spirit.
One is better than none.
Now, talking about the Archer Community Center and one thing that jumped out here was, uh, agenda, agenda item number two, Ms. Chrissy Hensley, Archer Branch Library, fee waiver request for December sixteenth and December eighteenth, uh, a Christmas carol play. Sounds like it was a beautiful thing. However, the more I look into and understand ad valorem taxes, the Archer or the, the Alachua County Library has a budget now of northward of thirty million dollars. So, it's just something that they would come to us.
And ask for.
And ask for a fee waiver.
Freebie.
And then we would grant it. Again, we wanna keep up with maintenance and, and doing and, and keep that gem and rent it out. We can't keep giving things away. So, that's my story to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Like my wife's grandmother said, I haven't had the first cow that had to learn to read, so. She never liked the library tax. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Costello.
Lori Costello, uh, do you realize that over the last four years, you approved thirty to over fifty percent to each person for raises? Y'all approved that much? Yep. Um, and are we still doing three people on call? We shouldn't be. Uh, Deanna has built in on the budget a three percent raise for everybody and overtime and not one commissioner said anything about that. I was really shocked. Um, we haven't received, uh, we haven't received an answer if the city pays for life and dental and vision. Uh, if we do, that should be paid by the employee. Uh, we are paying for jeans, boots, T-shirts, sun shirts, et cetera. That really needs to stop. Just like Hawthorne, the guys gets two T-shirts and they buy the rest if they need more, okay? You know, you're so used of giving all this away, we need to start pulling back. The, I don't know whether the guys aren't listening to, well, obviously they're not listening to Deanna, the meter lids. I, you know, they're just, they're not, and I asked her, I said, "Did you tell them?" Yep, yep, yep. The gate, the gate's always open, it's always, always open. Uh, you know, I don't know, but every single one of y'all got a report when I was the commissioner, what Public Works did. If you forgot about it, I can always send it again. They did four times the amount of work with the same people, okay? So, when y'all were saying, or Deanna says you're short-staffed, you're not short-staffed, by no means. Absolutely no means, they cut down in mowing, uh, they're, they're just, we got so much deferred maintenance, they're not taking care of the sidewalks, the roads and sidewalks needs to be cut down, the retention ponds, uh, one retention pond hasn't even been touched in five years. The fences, it starts with one, just one pole needs to go into the other. They won't do it and then you end up twenty, thirty feet of fence. Deferred maintenance equals money, okay? What are we doing, or should I say not doing? You know, the water meter lids, they're getting crushed because they're not even being put on right. I mean, all the buildings need to be maintained, they're not being maintained, including the, all the pavilions. I put in work orders March and April, they haven't been completed, all right? Surplus property should always be on your desk in January. Deanna told me for four months, Public Works was cleaning it and fixing it up. No, they weren't. That grader has been sitting in the thing that I know of since January, two flat tires. Now, those tires probably aren't even any good and they're expensive. I mean, it is really bad and super, and Public Works needs to be supervised. I mean terribly. Um, the deferred maintenance and just nothing's, nothing's being taken care of. I mean, e- even if you look at the report, the report says that they trimmed Wilson Robinson's park. They have never trimmed the whole park, it's a mess, it's a crazy mess.
It doesn't say that.
Pardon me?
It doesn't say that.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't, if you look at it, it says they, um, weed-eat the totlot. The totlot.
The totlot in Wilson's Robinson Park? It says here, weed at the playgrounds, got it, sorry. Okay, well, they need, they need to weed-eat the whole thing.
Thank you.
I mean, it's, it's bad. Things are bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Green?
Anne Green. You know, I, as a citizen, I'm just kinda frustrated where we are financially and I, I know the history and I know how it's come about and I know what's happened, we've spent the money, that's what's happened. But it's a bit embarrassing that we bring somebody from the city office in another municipality to get our bookkeeping straightened, to reconcile our bank statements when that's something we learned in high school. And in Deanna, I've heard Mr. Hammond say that Cindy knew Deanna's job and Deanna knew Cindy's job and it's just one, you, you wonder who knew what job. And I just, I just wish we could just bring this to a close and we don't hear what Doge says. You know, you're not being transparent with, with what was coming from Tallahassee, what they're asking for and I, it's just a frustration. And the other thing I wanted to say was about our survey. The survey, the city was given the land and the land is, is now the city's to divide and we have the braid trail coming through. How is the braid trail gonna affect our properties? So why would we go to that expense when the braid trail's gonna come through and we're gonna do it again?
I confirm with the county that what we're talking about carving off is gonna have no impact on the area that they need for the trail.
It has been surveyed. That's that stake that you see in the flower bed. They, they've come out, I don't think we've been privileged.
So is that what Mr. McMillan's charging so much for? He's got to go around that survey?
I, I, I don't.
I mean, that's, that's a bunch.
But that, the stakes that you see over there are from the braid trail.
They've been here.
Yes, ma'am. They, they, they spent a week here doing their surveying for the expansion of the trail.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lewandowski?
Good evening. So, uh, I wanted to put a compliment out to Scott White. I think Scott did an amazing, cause since we brought up today the, the banners. So Scott did a really good job with the banners. He made the phone calls, he made the sales pitch. The banners look really good. Um, and I think the city ought to consider giving him a little letter thanking him for that, because he took some serious initiative. Uh, that should be an example for all city employees. And I was really impressed by my banner came out. All the other banners looked good. He did a good job. And took really good initiative with that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Going once, going twice. This meeting's adjourned at eight thirty-one. Thank you all very much for your participation. That clock up there is clock a record.